Good morning and welcome to the November 5, 2012 workshop of the Orlando City Council. Today we are going to get an update from our good partners at the Metro Orlando EDC. The EDC has been a great partner for the city of Orlando and all the metro governments in central Florida. Last year, or this year, think of job creation opportunities that the EDC has partnered with us and private industry to bring about, Publix Distribution Center, Planet Hollywood's headquarters operation, Mazor Robotics, U.S. headquarters operation. So, we're just going to update us on those and many other things that are going on with the EDC. Rick Weddle, the president and CEO of the Metro Orlando EDC. And I will note that we have a very esteemed council substituting for Mayan Downs today, Roy Payne. All right. Well, don't mess up today and we'll let you come back.
Thank you, Mayor, through his commission. Yes, it's a pleasure and honor to be here to give you a brief update.
And report and respond to questions regarding the EDC's activities over the past year. I guess it was just about nineteen months or so ago, Mayor, I think one of my first introductions into this marketplace after taking this job was State of the City meeting in these chambers. And we've come a long way since then and had a lot of changes. We've gone through considerable change and considerable transition toward building an economic development platform that we hope will be both more effective in achieving high-impact results, but also more responsive to you and our stakeholders in making sure that your goals are deeply embedded in our goals. In fact, we don't have any goals that aren't really your goals if we're correctly aligned. Accordingly, over the period of time, a fair amount of my time has been spent internally to try to understand our mandate for action and our business model and work on our overall value proposition. To that end, we've made good progress, but in the next few weeks and months, I'll be trying to reach out to each of you individually to try to get on a more regular cycle of connection and communication and engagement as we are able to turn more of my time, as we fill out our staff team and turn more of my time externally. In the brief time that we have together this morning, I'd like to provide you with an overview of the EDC, a quick look at the year that we've just finished, some conversations about our value proposition and some positioning for success opportunities going forward. I will refer periodically to a little handout that you have in front of you also, so you might, and if you haven't, if we have some extras if you haven't, don't have that in front of you. We completed this past August, a trip to Austin, Texas. And Mayor, thank you for, you know, your participation in helping to lead that mission. But one of the things that we learned on that mission was how they benchmark their region, their community, every year to a benchmark group of competitor locations along a set of indicators. And this is an example of a set of indicators that we're currently starting with our leadership to work on and understand how we really shake out with regard to this. And from this, we'll learn a number of things about where there can be opportunities for improvement. Obviously, consistent success of our mission, job growth and the percentage change in job growth throughout the region, average annual wages and the percentage change in those wages. But the two next bullets, the percentage of adults with a bachelor's degree or higher are something we learned from that Austin trip is very, very important in that they have become a magnet for talent. And in doing so, not only they benchmark their existing population, but they also benchmark the in-migration of people into their market with their educational level. And for example, we're in the low twenties, twenty-two, twenty-three percent or so in our region with bachelor's degrees or higher. That compares in Austin to about thirty-seven percent, I believe. Our in-migration is roughly equivalent to our existing population. Their in-migration is fifty-two and a half percent of the people migrating into the Austin area are bachelor's degrees or higher. And so, that's part of this whole, and we'll talk a little bit about that in branding and other matters, but that's part of the idea of if we're going to build a knowledge economy, we're going to raise wages and income and have a better and more prosperous region, we have to work to find a way to also have a better educated workforce. Our job, our mission and purpose is to aggressively attract, grow and retain jobs for the metropolitan Orlando region. We do that by focusing on recruiting new companies and jobs, assisting with job growth of existing firms, supporting entrepreneurial startups more indirectly than directly. There are plenty of groups that are doing that directly, but also attracting film and television production, which is not often talked about and doesn't often get a lot of headlines, but is a very important part of the EDC program overall. In review for 2011 and 12, we were pleased to report that we were able to achieve almost 114 percent of the job goals. We had established a goal of 4,050 and actually finished the year and just completed a briefing of our executive committee at 4,604 with forty companies or so in that regard. You'll notice a difference there between established jobs and won. We have a very detailed and rigorous kind of process throughout the year of kind of going for established jobs, in other words, getting confirmation of the actual work for audit purposes with companies. So, early in the year, we have more won than established, and by the end of the year, the goal is for those two numbers to become the same as we get those transactions papered. You mentioned the Publix project. Obviously, the capital investment numbers are tied directly to that. It's almost an outlier in that regard because it's a really significant project. But also in film production days, we had 500 as a target and achieved 701 production days. And Orlando benefits a lot from the commercial film production in that regard. Our value proposition, we always talk about this as a region, but we do believe that the region is the right frame for success. Our city, Orlando, is our identity and it is the, it's important and it's what you get up every day and work on. But we believe that by focusing at the regional level, it gives us an opportunity to have greater success overall and individually in the individual communities. I'm pleased to report to you that we are in the final throes of bringing our contract forward for Osceola County, for them to rejoin the EDC. They've been out for a little over a year, but that relationship had been troubled for a longer period of time. But we're now back to a very collaborative process with them and we'll be bringing them back onboard at the November board meeting. Return on investment is important. There's a lot of, a lot of what we do is hard to measure. Some things are easier to measure. The sheet in front of you, what you'll find, it shows that there's, for every dollar in the last year that the city of Orlando has invested with EDC, we're projecting a $19.10 return on investment when you factor in all induced revenues, all indirect benefits. If you look at just direct revenues, $13.71 for each dollar. Now, how did we come to that number? We do an impact analysis. I'm sure you see, when you vote on incentives, you'll see the impact analysis that shows it's a good deal or a bad deal for the city or for the state. We do an impact analysis on these, each project individually and the Orlando projects overall, and do a ten-year net present value assessment of that, counting all incentives, counting all public sector investments needed to mitigate the cost of that development. And so, our investment model shows that it's roughly about a $20 return on investment. We'd like for that to be larger and we think it will over time, but we still think it's a good investment. And we'd like for you to think of your resources that you provide us with as a steward for your interest as an investment rather than an expenditure. In the past year, we've worked on and assisted your team, and I give them a lot of credit under Brooke's direction and Kathy's support. We've worked very, very closely with the city staff. Thirteen projects, which represent thirty-two and a half percent of the number of projects that we've had the chance to work with, thirteen-hundred-and-eighty-seven jobs, or thirty percent of the total employment. Again, the square footage kind of goes off the chart because of the sheer size of the Publix operation in that regard, as does capital investment. But $51,375 in average wage, which compares to $45,000 overall for all the projects that we've assisted in the region, which suggests that you're getting some of the higher value, higher impact, higher wage jobs in that area. This is a list of the projects that we've had the good pleasure to assist you with. And I say assist because, please understand that we, that no one person, no one organization, no one entity, no one effort really does all this work. It really requires a lot of teamwork in that regard, and we're pleased to be a part of this team. This is a good listing of projects and some that are across, we'll note, there's four of those are new-to-market projects representing thirteen percent of the total employment that, the others are expansion and retention of existing companies, which is about the right balance that we're seeing overall. We also like to think that we provide you a fair and equitable public funding formula. What I mean by that is that we lever public dollars with private dollars. We are seventy percent privately funded and only thirty percent publicly funded. So, that means that for every dollar that all of our public partners put in, for every thirty cents, seventy cents goes in of private revenues, which enable us to really have a much larger impact overall. And we like to give our partners and say that we, our value proposition also includes a level playing field with the maximum amount of transparency that we can provide. By level playing field, we mean that, you know, we don't get to steer projects. Companies decide where they expand, where they grow, where they locate, and our job is to make sure that your team, for the projects that come through Enterprise Florida, the project that comes to us directly, or that are referred to us by private investors, that your team has an absolute level playing field with maximum transparency to be able to make sure that Orlando puts its best foot forward and wins more than it loses in that regard. And support for product improvement. This is an area where we haven't talked a lot in the past, but what I mean by that is to try to work in partnership with you to create better product offerings, new product offerings. You obviously hear a lot about Medical City, and we certainly work with the EDC partners in trying to make sure that we have focused marketing and promotion programs to exploit those life science activities there. But also, if you take this more into the near-market area, the Health Village project at Florida Hospital, which also sits on the Sun Rail, one of the new Sun Rail stations, is the location where Mazor will be, Mayor and Commissioners. And it's, we see that as an example of a much more dense live-work-play, life science and clinical research location. And so, we want to try to be able to not only market and promote it, but help work to develop that product. And then Creative Village, I'd be remiss if I didn't, you know, point out that this really is a project that represents a really significant upside potential for downtown Orlando going forward. We work closely and we've just recently orchestrated some meetings where we're bringing some of the folks who might be customers in that Creative Village concept, together with the developers in some workshop formats to help bring about a better understanding of exactly what kind of product offerings those gaming companies are going to be wanting and digital media companies are going to be wanting to have. And so that that project can get off to a fast start and develop with the opportunity to play the kind of value-added role that it would have there. So, we always welcome the idea of trying to figure out how to be more supportive of the many, of the myriad of location alternatives that the city has coming forward. Positioning for success, we are trying to become much more focused over the next several years with meaningful and measurable goals. We just completed an exercise where we looked back ten years of projects for the EDC and found that when you annualize the job impacts, the EDC has historically assisted about seven percent of the job growth in the metropolitan region, year over year, over a ten-year kind of average in that regard. So, to that extent, we start looking forward then as to how do we begin to set goals that are appropriately targeted for the region overall. In the past, they always compared ourselves to ourselves. You know, how do we compare next year to this year in that regard? But now, what we're trying to do is forecast five years out and look at employment growth and then have our leadership work to set job goals that will do two things, that will create more jobs if we can achieve them together in partnership, but also will be able to balance the portfolio and move up the food chain with higher wages and higher and more productive incomes for our citizens. And in doing that, we have to look at then what's the mix between attraction and what's the mix between expansion and retention. And so, this set of goals here in the next year, establishing a target goal of 4,600, a stretch goal, not on this chart, but in our materials of 9,200, to try to grow overall. In simple terms, there's about two million people in the market, a million in the workforce. So, 10,000 jobs would be a one percent growth. Two percent forecast growth would be about 20,000 jobs. Currently, it looks like their forecast is about, for about 24,000 jobs to be increased in the market overall next year. And so, we want to try to factor in that and make sure that we have an aggressive program to try to bring more and better jobs in that. And as you see over the five-year forecast, we're trying to increase the percentage of jobs that come from new-to-market. For one simple reason, we want to gain share. We want to gain share and try to make somebody's business our business, try to get some business from other places, from discretionary projects that could go somewhere else that also come here. And so, we're working hard to try to establish meaningful and measurable employment goals in that regard. The bottom line there also, we talk about project assistance level, and we've tracked this for a number of years from our project managers, how deeply engaged they are in the projects. Did they play a significant role or a moderate role? Did they play a minor role in that regard? So, we've set a goal, and over the last year of those moderate assistance levels, seventy-one percent of the projects showed that our staff played a moderate or significant role in that. We're trying to move that up to eighty-five percent. We think we want to add more value we can by being more deeply engaged, making a difference, adding more value as we go into that. We also will be working, as I said, to try to balance and increase our activities in attraction with more emphasis on attracting new business and industry to try to gain share. But also, we've just completed an international study looking at our opportunities, and we're trying to set an organizational balance between how much effort should be international, how much should be in domestic, and that's currently be about two-thirds domestic and about one-third international. The strategy approach, and I'd like to talk just a little bit about this, are some things that are either different or some areas of emphasis where we're trying to improve going forward. One is, and I should, this should say reestablish instead of establish, but reestablish an international affairs hosting program. You'll recall when we went through some budget cutbacks in the past and some staffing cutbacks we pulled back from and reduced emphasis on the way we structured the international affairs hosting program. We're currently under the direction of Irma Stenman, who is our international team lead, doing a pilot project. So, we're once again hosting these kinds of projects, and over the next six months, we're really keeping track and measuring what the staff hours are, what the costs are in that regard. So, we'll actually have a better understanding exactly what it costs to run a much more expanded or significant international affairs hosting program. We're very focused on foreign direct investment, but we're also willing to do, and in this pilot program, hosting international affairs visits, especially in those markets that are our target markets in those areas. You've heard a lot about a focus on regional branding, and we will be leading an effort in alignment with the state of Florida and in alignment with Orange County and the city of Orlando and our other public partners to lead a regional branding effort. Ken Potrock at Disney is chairing a region-wide committee that will be looking at retaining some professional staff, professional consultants to develop a new brand platform and develop a branding campaign, all by hopefully by March or April of next year, to really understand how we take Orlando, our unique and special identity, and try to figure out how it can be extended into mean much more as of a business location than just the great tourism and hospitality location that it is. The fourth bullet down, elevating priority and focus on modeling, simulation and training sector retention, and that's the BRAC threat mitigation effort. We're working hard with UCF, with the High Tech Corridor Council, with our cities, the counties, and others to try to come up with a strategy, a meaningful strategy, to make sure that the 30,000 jobs or so that are in some way directly or indirectly associated with the DoD defense spending and the military procurement are not at any greater risk than they would be in just the normal defense spending reduction. We expect defense spending to go down coming out of two wars and in a very difficult budget situation nationally, but we want to make sure that we are in a position to try to make sure that Congress knows and that the Department of Defense knows the importance of this sector and that the state of Florida also knows the importance of this sector to our area. There are thirty-three bases in Florida that will all be going through their preparation to kind of head off 2015 base realignment and closure risk, and we want to make sure that we are in as good a shape, if not better, than any of those to protect those jobs and really be able to build a core strength around that particular area. We're at a bit of disadvantage because it's out in behind the trees and at the research park, and we don't have a big base with shift change and a lot of uniform personnel to draw attention to. We are often, we have no, very few uniform personnel in this very important $5 billion investment area. We're also working to be more collaborative in our expansion and retention efforts so that we are not going on our own, but rather going in partnership with city staff when we try to talk to companies about expanding and retaining their jobs in our area. Just completed a study that shows the target sectors, and you hear about this a lot, but this is a chart that shows how the demand for our strengths and our strengths match up. So, the matrix shows the supply side, which would be the strength of Orlando's offer, and the demand side being the demand in those sectors for new investment opportunities. It's no accident that business services continues to be one of the great opportunities we have because there's high demand for that and we have high offering quality in that regard, good labor, good strength in that particular area, but also in software, IT, creative industries and life science and in those particular areas. Going forward, what we're trying to do is to become more focused, and so with the work of the consultants, we've developed these into tiers. So, business service and advanced technology, which combines a number of the technological sectors together as enabling platforms into tier one and tier two being bioscience, life sciences and biotechnology, which is not a fully-developed offer yet, not nearly as good as we are in modeling, simulation, training and business services in terms of those sectors. So, from a targeting perspective, we're tiering these a bit to make it easier to do marketing. Our target source markets on the left-hand side are the domestic markets where the research indicates we probably have the best opportunity for investment potential, tier one and tier two, and international markets, which we just completed this international study, which really breaks down the markets into the areas where there is the greatest potential from a research point of view for cross-border investment and investment opportunity, job-creating investment opportunities. Price should come is no surprise, UK, Germany and Canada are the tier one. Tier two, some surprises, Spain, France and Japan. Tier three being the more developing markets. We hear a lot about China, India, Brazil and Turkey, but we think more about Brazil. You hear a lot about Brazil as an investment opportunity, probably as a passive investment opportunity, maybe one of the greatest that we have. But according to the research and the number of job-creating projects, it's still not quite as high a level of foreign direct investment, of capital investment and job-creating projects as it will be in the future in that regard. So, we're tiering those projects in those areas to try to be able to focus our resources, your resources, where they will have the greatest impact over the short and long term. So, in recap, we're trying to work hard to create new and better jobs, to try to create or support the increase in capital investment and tax-based, improve our film production revenue and our business opportunity growth with ultimately the goal to create a more competitive city and more competitive region overall. I'll, Mayor, I'll take a breath right now and respond to questions if there are any, please.
Okay. Thank you very much, Rick. Are there questions or comments, members, commissioners? Commissioner Ains.
Thank you, Rick, for your presentation. What's listed in your presentation was the poverty rate. How do you really measure or determine the poverty rate?
Yeah, that's a good question. It's the first time we've began to consider including that as an indicator, and I don't have the specifics with me at this point, but that's something we need to begin to look at and measure against it. And so, we'll probably develop a set of standards that with your support and with our leadership, we'll come up with. You know, I don't know, you know, everybody measures it differently. The federal government has one set of standards and things, you know, but we, so we want to look at where the income structure of our citizens are and how can we move that up over time. Over the last few years, most of the emphasis has been on creating jobs because there weren't enough, you know, just getting people back to work. But as we begin to see that take place, I think we've got to work on the prosperity of our people overall.
And that would be from a regional perspective?
Should, we should, we should look at it regionally, but then we should also look at it on a county basis, and then we should look at it probably city by city in that regard. Not that we can do, you know, we're not, not that we can do anything directly to affect overall poverty rates, but it's an indicator that will be determined largely by, you know, the kinds of jobs we have, the labor force participation rate, the number of people that are having those jobs and the quality of the jobs in that area.
On one of your slides, it had the FDI study. What is the FDI?
Yeah, it's a foreign direct investment. There's a group called OCO. They're currently under contract with Enterprise Florida, and they do lead generation and international marketing studies. And this past spring and summer, we had a research project where we retained them to look at how we match up as a region for investment. So, foreign direct investment, FDI's, cross-border investment from one country to another for investment. And so, those targeting structures came out of that study.
Okay. Thank you. Can we show Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just have a few questions. You talked about the Creative Village. You talked about meeting with some folks. What kind of folks are we meeting with and what is our strategy there?
Well, we've been, we've been meeting with, and been asked to and have helped with city staff to meet with the developers, the bankers that are involved in that, been through a number of meetings. And then we pulled, I guess it's probably been ninety days or so ago, we pulled together a group of gaming companies, the digital media companies that we put together just a little workshop with the developers to kind of get them together to have some conversation around, you know, making sure that the product that's developed fits what those around, you know, making sure that the product that's developed fits what those kinds of companies are looking for.
You also talk about a study for international, for the international section of the EDC. How long you think this study's going to take?
Well, we just finished it, and I'll be happy, in fact, we'll make a note. Why don't we make sure that we get you all a copy of it if you, it also can help you, if you have trouble sleeping late at night, you can, it's pretty detailed and long-term in that regard, but it's by OCO is the name of the company, and we'll get you a copy of that. And it looks at how we match up to foreign direct investment flows into Florida, into the United States, into the southeastern United States.
I'm personally interested in the international side of the equation here, and when you guys, about a year ago, got away with the international side, I was a little sad because I think you guys are so important, especially I experienced in past years, your participation on some trips, and I would definitely like to see that again because you guys are a very important part of this.
Commissioner, could I make one comment on that also? I would say I would agree completely with you, and we are, when I said we're doing this pilot project to look at exactly how, what the volume of demand is to be involved in the International Affairs Office, and we're, over the course of the next six months, we'll be coming back with a report on that to give you a clear idea that we, I probably agree with you that this is an area where we probably need to increase emphasis, increase structure, and the demand seems to support that. And so I want to be very mindful of calling that to your attention.
The way I see it is now that we have become the epicenter of the world, I see a lot of interest from international, from other countries wanting to come over here and invest, South America, Europe. So, and I also heard you talking about international markets. What kind of investment opportunities are we seeing on these countries that you've mentioned here?
Yeah, it's, you know, there's, so if we bifurcate investment from passive investment to active investment or productive job-creating investment, because our mission has not been largely to focus on passive investment. There are, for example, lots of folks that would come to this market and maybe buy a home, second home, or third home, or fourth home, or fifth home, whatever, as an investment potential. And so the data that we have doesn't really reflect that. We don't have a good source of that information. This study focused on what is known as cross-border foreign direct investment for job-creating opportunities in terms of active production facilities. We're seeing good demand in that area. What's interesting is that, and the point I would make, and I'll even use our friends in Miami with the Beacon Council, everybody would assume on the surface that Miami's biggest investment in foreign direct investment would come from Latin America or South America. Actually, Spain has been the largest inflow of foreign direct investment for production in maybe 30 companies over the last several years coming out of Spain in that particular area. So we think, based on this survey, that obviously the UK and Canada, because of the affinity with the United States and proximity, represents a large investment opportunity. Germany, with its strength in Northern Europe, is a first-tier opportunity also in that area also. We view these other markets, based on the research, as developing markets, where we should, we should be going to those markets and developing relationships, knowing that it's a much longer pull, but that doesn't mean you don't wait until it's ripe to tend to that vineyard, you know? We have to make sure that it's time, that we're there ahead of time in that regard. So we'll be doing more of that as we begin to scale that up. We're currently budgeting in this next year for two international trips as we're trying to reorganize our recruitment and attraction program, and six major domestic sales missions in that regard. So that's kind of the balance that we're looking. And we'd hopefully want to fund one of those international trips as a primary investment mission, and the other one, hopefully we're in some preliminary conversations with Visit Orlando about a, maybe a developing market trip that we might partner with them on to try to get more bang for our buck on that. It's all expensive, but we have to do it anyway.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ains?
Thank you, Mayor. One other question, excuse me, concerning the target source markets that you outlined, the domestic USA markets, you had tier one, tier two. Was there no tier three? And where does Orlando fall into any one of those tiers?
Well, I think we, I think we would call ourselves, in terms of a new market, tier one. Let me give you an example, and everyone considers Austin, and we visited Austin, a major tier-one market for opportunity. They benchmark nine other markets in addition to themselves for indicators each and every year. We are one of those nine markets. So we, sometimes we're better than others, sometimes we're not as good as others, but we're in that top 10 that they benchmark in those areas. When we talk about these tier-one markets, we're really looking at them as a source of either industry branch expansions or a source of relocations. Why would the California markets be tier-two as opposed to tier-one? People have asked me that question. We think we have a natural affinity towards the Upper Midwest and the Eastern Seaboard, just simply based on history and business connectivity. California is a great source, you know, with the work they're doing to make their business climate as bad as possible in California, it makes it a great source of opportunities. But the distance and the fact that there's markets in Colorado and Arizona and Texas that they have to fly over to get here makes it a little bit more of a second-tier priority for us as opposed to the Eastern Seaboard. So that's, so I don't, I don't want to give you the impression that we're not in the top tier in that regard, but as a source for new investment, we consider these to be our top tier-one.
Because we do try to retain a lot of the businesses that are here in the Orlando or metropolitan Orlando area.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
And they're, and we're, you know, one of the perils that comes with being successful is, is over time, more and more of people like me are going to be coming to Orlando to try to recruit our business to their markets, and so we need to be mindful of that.
Commissioner Stewart?
Rick, thank you for, thank you for the work that you're doing. Back to the same tier question, because you're kind of on the edge of what I was going to have the conversation about. Tell me where, who are we competing against? Austin, obviously, I mean, and who's kind of coming into the cycle? Who's kind of coming out of the cycle? And you've identified a lot of stuff that I think is perfect, but how does that end up eventually migrating to us in terms of what do you want us to do? I mean, I know we've talked in terms of a tier-one, but the question is, do we want to look, when we see something coming out of New York, we want to, that's your highest priority, we want to go after it as best we can versus somebody who comes out of Seattle who would be a tier-two kind of thing?
Well, we, you know, so when you read the OCO study, it really talks about proactive and reactive, and so it says, where the opportunity is greatest, that's where you should spend your money, spend your proactive dollars, you know, and we're, but you want to react well and strongly to all opportunities in that regard. So who do we compete with? It depends entirely on the project. And I wish it was as simple as just saying, well, we compete with Atlanta and that's it. But for different kinds of projects, we will compete with different markets. For example, because we are on a peninsula and because we are not, because you have to go through the rest of Florida to get to the rest of the country, for manufacturing and distribution, largely our market is Florida. So we compete with other Florida locations when it comes to those kinds of products. When we look at life sciences, we're looking largely at the Boston-Cambridge, New York, Philadelphia, New Jersey, the pharma corridors, down to Bethesda, Maryland, that go into those, to those areas, where there's already a deep and rich mass in those, in those kinds of companies. Business services, oftentimes it's time zone specific, and so we'll pick up Atlanta, we'll pick up Jacksonville, we'll pick up Tampa and some of those. So I wish it was simple enough to do that, but we compete with a myriad of different locations based on the design criteria of the projects. We had a, had a project just the other day that we're still, it's still a live project, it's actually an Indian, now this is the first one that I've had like this ever, but it was an Indian company that was, had been the recipient of offshore business in derivatives. And they were now bringing that back, looking, some of it may have been political, some of it may have been just business continuation and business continuity issues, bringing that piece of business back to the US. And they didn't want to go into the Northeast. They wanted them to look at, but eastern, eastern time zone would be very important in that regard. So we're, there, in that instance, we're competing on a business case profile against their Indian market and against other eastern, you know, business services activity areas.
Thank you.
Rick, one way to create jobs is to grow our existing companies, and I heard Rick Goins was the keynote speaker at something I was at in the last six months, and he was emphasizing the fact that the growth in consumption is going to be far greater internationally than it is going to be domestically. What are we doing to help our local companies either improve their export capabilities or grow into those international markets?
Yeah, very good question, and you're exactly right. The export firms, the rate of job growth among strong exporters is faster than the rate of job growth among those who don't export. We have not had for many years, or a good number of years at EDC, a full-time what we call export-trade promotion program. Enterprise Florida has heavily weighted their efforts around trade and trade promotion, and so we try to work closely with them and Department of Commerce in those, in those particular areas. The challenge for export promotion is significant. The big companies are, there's not much you can do to help them. They are really proficient. They're in most markets, and the challenge for the smaller companies is getting them ready to export. And it's a very management-intensive and very challenging thing to help smaller firms learn, you know, how to do, you know, financing and collections and all the logistics that come with that. And so we haven't had a program in terms of actually staffing for that. It's been more of a referral and partnership with Enterprise Florida.
Commissioner Ortiz?
One last one. I've noticed, well, not a big trend, but some sort of trend on northern companies coming down south, CBS, now we have Wawa really bursting all over the place. We're still waiting for White Castle, but anyhow.
Let me write that one down.
But are you being approached by northern companies? Do you see a trend? Is this just?
Very, very good question. And, you know, we have been through an unbelievably complex season of economic development opportunities in the last four, five years, you know, not telling you anything you don't know. And it has really been awkward, and it's been difficult, and we have suffered along with all the other Sun Belt locations that had benefited with that migratory move. We're starting to see changes occur in that. We're seeing net positive in migration again, some 31,000 or so in this past year, and so it's too early to, it's too early to say, you know, happy days are here again because that is unlikely. And when they, when they get here, it won't be like it was once before, but we're starting to see early indicators of a restoration to a more normal pattern of demographic shifts and economic growth. With that, then companies are starting to do in their long-range planning, is they see those data sets too, and say, well, we want to be here when the growth returns really to central Florida. Wawa, those companies, they, they study where, that's a pretty good indicator that things are starting to turn around when they start to want to be in these markets and see this as a, as a source of growth. We had an inquiry a while back with a company that is a new chain of restaurants that was looking at where they wanted to locate their headquarters, but also what their growth plans would be in central Florida. So we're starting to see some of that. I'm actually quite optimistic and quite bullish that we will see, you know, I always have to footnote this and say, there's a fiscal cliff, you know, there's, there's all sorts, there's still the euro, there's all sorts of headwinds that we have to work through. But overall, I think that our opportunities look good, and we're starting to see really good indicators that, that we could, we could get back to a more normal rate of growth. And in doing so, the challenge will be, how do we stay focused on better jobs and not just get back into, you know, growth for the sake of growth? But we need to stay focused on that, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart?
One last question. I was looking at your international market and tier market, and I know that things are going nutso in Brazil. Tell me, in South America's side, are there other areas that you would, you would consider more tier-three or tier-two? I mean, one of the things that you mentioned before, time zone, and one of the real benefits of working with Brazil is that we're actually kind of in the same time zone. So are there other things along the same lines that will allow us to kind of take the benefit of the, of the emerging markets of South America?
Yeah, my sense is yes. There are, we're starting to see, but, but the, but the data suggests that the volume of those cross-border investments, whether it's Panama, whether it's Brazil, whether it's some, will still be lower than the volume of projects from Northern Europe, from even Japan with the, with, as they're starting to deal with their own demographic problem and having to source outside of markets. So we want to be mindful that it's, there's still some work to be done, and those markets have to mature. Right now, a lot of the investment's going that way in terms of, you know, the US still remains the number-one source of cross-border foreign direct investment in the world, and that's outbound investment around the world. But, you know, Brazil continues to be such a huge country. Its growth rates, although they're starting to, starting to, there's some, a few, a few trouble signs in their market. We still see it as a great opportunity for, for business investment coming back this way, probably in the first place that we'll see a lot of business investment out of in that regard. And they're doing some interesting things. In fact, I'm visiting with city staff about in some of their markets where they've done some, whole community projects around digital media and creative industries in that regard. And I think there's some things we can learn. I know it's hard to believe that Americans can learn from other countries, but there's some things we can learn from what they've done in Recife, which is north of Rio and that area, on digital media and things of that sort.
Rick, thank you for that great presentation. You want to close by introducing the members of your staff that you brought with you?
We have, boy, if I have to introduce you to Nate, then he's in trouble, but Nate Grover, who has headed up our external affairs department for the last, almost a year now, I guess in that regard, who's actually moving into business development in the next couple of months and going to be, become a project manager in business development. Jennifer Wakefield, who is our new vice president of communications and marketing, and kind of cleans up all these things that I would normally say inappropriately, she makes them sound better and look good in that regard. Laura Kern, who does digital media and works in communications in that regard. And so, and the rest of them are out busy working, trying to bring business to Orlando.
As it should be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Again, just let me say thank you to each of you for your support, all the good work that you do. Thanks to Brooke and Kathy and the rest of the city staff for being such good partners with us, mayor and commissioners. And, you know, my office will be reaching out to you and be trying to find a way to spend a little better time connecting and communicating in the months going ahead. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes our workshop for this morning.